All right, great. I'm going to call this meeting to order. This is the City Planning Commission Comprehensive Plan Committee. This is video and audio accessible and via Zoom and slash by phone. I'm going to move straight to public comment where persons may speak for three minutes and please state your name and address for the record. Do, oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Leonard, you had your hand up.
Oh, not on purpose. My apologies.
I got you. All good. No problem. All right. So yeah, with that, we're going into this agenda item number two, which is public comment. So persons may speak for three minutes and please state your name and address at the beginning of the comments. Do we have any callers that would like to speak at this time?
Um, we have lots of attendees. Um, let's just give it a moment. Please press star nine if you're on the phone or use the raise hand feature if you are logged into our meeting via Zoom. If you would like to address the Conference of Plans subcommittee at this time.
See, one, two, three hands raised. All right.
Chair Lee, can you remind our participants that is this the only time they get to share public comments? So they won't be able to at the end of the meeting. So.
Yes, that is correct. Thank you, Commissioner White. Um, this is the only time for public comment. Uh, it looks like we have three callers.
It's Shannon Lau. You have three minutes to address the subcommittee.
Yes, hello, I'm Shannon. Um, so today in today's packet for the land use discussion, I saw that Wasna Avenue is featured as an existing complete neighborhood. And I did find it odd that this corridor just centered around the Arborland Strip is being mentioned alongside walkability. Um, I've lived in Ann Arbor for six years, most recently along this road, and I want to share what a complete neighborhood looks like to me. A complete neighborhood is one where I feel liberated and empowered in choosing to walk or bus and not needing to cross five lanes of traffic on Wasna on fear or hike through hundreds of yards of asphalt parking lots to get to a storefront. It's one where if there were benches alongside walking paths, they wouldn't just be a spot to catch your breath, but a calm public living space to stretch, read a book and watch bikers pass by. And I'm sure you're familiar with the ultimate ice cream test, like can my little cousin safely make her way back to the ice cream shop and back home or else? And would you feel safe, your kid doing the same? And I, I think we have so many neighborhoods and they're highlighting the packet where we can really rethink this land use building community in the city. And I'm optimistic because there are a lot of wholehearted people here advocating for these things and pouring time into energy, timing, time and energy into this. Um, so I hope that here we're leaning into walkability, not just as a function of number of assets in a radius, like I think is being measured here, but more so the qualitative sense of safety and comfort um, created by the environment and people around us. So to me, that transforms Ann Arbor from a place where you can get by and pass through into a place that you actually call home. Thanks.
Thank you. We have two other callers, caller ending in seven, nine, eight. I believe. So here we go.
Yep, we have three minutes to address the subcommittee. Caller ending in seven, nine, eight, go ahead.
Uh, hi, um, my name is Rich Fine. I'm at six, one, eight, Duane Court. You hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, thank you. Uh, the majority of considerations in the city's comprehensive plan revolve around increased density. Uh, the need for greater density, both to accommodate growth in a limited space and to reduce vehicle miles traveled is of course a priority, if not a necessity. However, uh, the comprehensive plan should also direct the city to amend existing codes and ordinances uh, to either require or encourage installation of clean energy fossil fuel free systems and high energy efficiency in all new developments and in all major rehabs. In Ann Arbor, reducing the energy usage in buildings is the largest obstacle for reaching carbon neutrality. The Office of Sustainability's own greenhouse gas inventory shows that sixty-nine percent of our greenhouse gases come from energy usage in buildings. Over this past year, for Ann Arbor's new medium and large multifamily developments, the transition away from using methane gas towards the use of electricity for space and water heating has been startling. The overwhelming majority of these new developments are being built or planned as all electric. The same needs to happen for smaller multifamily and pure commercial developments as well. We need carrots and sticks to assure that we continue to make our buildings, both new and old, as efficient as possible and that our buildings get their energy without the use of fossil fuels. When considering A two zero carbon, the A two zero carbon neutrality plan goals as part of Ann Arbor's comprehensive plan, reducing building emissions, both direct and indirect, through greater energy efficiency electrification and clean fossil fuel energy should be considered as an equal or superior priority to density. If we do not, uh, all of the carbon reduction gains made through increased density
Four seconds.
Did quite literally go up in smoke. Thank you.
All right, with the phone number ending with five, three, four, you can press star six to unmute your phone and address the committee for up to three minutes. All right, ending with five.
Good evening. Good evening. This is Tom Stalberg calling from the lower town in Ann Arbor. Uh, I really liked what the last caller had to say, and uh, I'm not going to be too repetitive of that. Um, but the, right now, we're not on track to meet our A two zero goals and a lot of that has had to do with how we've been approving developments recently. So in our comprehensive plan, we need to make sure that our adjustments are going to try to put us back on track to meet A two zero goals of carbon neutrality twenty thirty. Uh, in addition to increasing the energy efficiency of our already built environment, which I myself will be participating in because I'm a landlord is my primary uh, occupation at the moment, even though I'm moving more into development very shortly. Um, new structures are going to be easier. Uh, there's going to be a lot of work to do to bring older structures up to the standards, uh, but that's happening. It's coming with our green rental housing uh, movement and there's going to be a phasing into that over the next couple of cycles of inspection. So I'm looking forward to all that. It's positive to meet our A two zero goals. In our comprehensive plan, we may not be able to dictate what goes on outside the city boundaries, but I think it's vitally important for us to plan with an awareness towards regional activity. There's an immense amount of development going on right now, just outside our boundaries and will continue. The greater Ann Arbor area by developers is considered out to Grass Lake, uh, up towards uh, the northern boundaries uh, and over the boundary of Wasna County. Um, developers are going to keep building. It's the same names you see around town here and others. Uh, it's coming and they're going to build and those people are going to commute into our town. If we don't figure out how to factor that in our comprehensive plan, our comprehensive plan won't deliver what we hope it will. So I know we can't regulate outside of our boundaries, but we certainly can plan for what we know is happening and the market's going to do whether we plan for it or not. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
User Claudius Vincent. Um, you have three minutes to address the committee.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. We can.
So we have to put a cart before the horse here since uh, the uh, the presentation hasn't been done yet, but since you all studied that in detail, my comments will make sense. Sam Claudius Vincent, I live at five, four, five, South Fifth Avenue in one of those green areas that are already desirable to live in. I found it informative to look to the meeting package materials, but I came away with the feeling that something important was completely missing in this presentation. What is missing is the downside of living in certain neighborhoods. After living for more than thirty years in my neighborhood, I've seen a lot of changes, most of them only in the last five years or so. They have all to do with the increased density and its correlates, the main ones being noise day and night, air pollution and traffic congestion. This plan does not have any assessment of these demerits and how they vary by neighborhood. There is no assessment of any of these downsides now, and more importantly, as we are dealing with planning for the future, how increasing the density in some areas will negatively affect the neighborhoods themselves and other neighborhoods that will carry the burden of increased traffic, et cetera. From looking at these maps, one would conclude that living in Burnt Park and in my neighborhood would be similar. Both are dark green. However, my neighborhood carries already a much higher load of the merits due to the proximity to downtown. Every twenty minutes, four city buses rumble down the neighborhood street. Every evening for two hours, the intersections with packet are gridlocked, further increasing the amount of diesel fumes spewed into the air. Trash pickup for the neighboring big buildings started three forty AM with, with a reliable earth shattering drop of heavy metal bill at five AM every morning, followed by the insistent beeping of regular trash trucks backing out at seven AM, all interrupted by the ear splitting noise of the freight train making its way down the Allen Creek Valley. You have to deal with none of this if you live in Burnt Park, but that is not apparent from this presentation. I'm not being comprehensive here and I'm sure similar arguments could be made for other neighborhoods. Since equity is one of the guiding principles of the plan, it has to include the burden that a area carries currently and how that would change by the proposed plan. As no changes to the street layout are proposed, this plan amounts to having more people live in the same area without providing any mitigating investment to counteract the downsides of that combat higher density. Thus, it is imperative that not just the benefits of higher density are distributed equitably, but its costs as well. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Um, any other callers?
Brian Chambers, you have three minutes to address the subcommittee.
Okay, thank you. Um, can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can.
So I'm um, very complimentary about uh, the material that's been put in front of you. I had a conversation the other day with somebody who's the director of what they like to call the Neighborhood Institute. You've probably heard of that. Um, and we were musing, well, if some areas are prone to walkability and maybe even are already walkable and have good um, locations for added density, what about the areas uh, that aren't walkable, that aren't near transit? That aren't um, good candidates uh, for density or, or um, neighborhoods that we would like to see? And we talked about, you know, whether or not that would be appropriate or not to map out uh, for the comprehensive plan project. Well, lo and behold, here it's been done by the project team. So my hat's off. Those, those are very important and critical questions. A lot of gaps and open items are, have been identified and that you're going to be reviewing today. And that's all a good thing because, you know, answers aren't necessarily straightforward in an urban planning context. There's the social issues, the environmental issues, everything else that has to be put in scope in regards to an actual land use plan that's prone to zoning and city ordinances. Uh, that's not an easy task, but I just want to thank the project team that's going to be presenting to you today to have defined the concept of complete neighborhoods, uh, to have done some initial mapping and to identify the areas where there are going to be likely gaps, where we uh, may have orphaned neighborhoods that aren't prone to transit, that aren't prone to density. And I'm very interested in how the discussion is going to go on those, but this is all good grist for the mill, as the saying goes. And my hats off to the project team who put this together and is looking for, and I am looking forward to your discussion on these topics and then how the team handles them going forward. I mean, the initial targets or the previous targets that I've seen in the land use plan for the potential growth of seventy-five thousand additional residents. Um, while it's based on the number of commuters and needing, you know, two point two people per household on average as you try to find places for forty thousand commuters, I don't know. Also maps to the potential growth of the University of Michigan at seventy-five thousand new employees and students by twenty fifty. I think what was really important and might have been left out in the previous updates to the comprehensive plan were around those growth targets and having a plan that seeks to address them.
Be more second.
Not necessarily accommodate them, but address them. But again, my hats off to the project team uh, who put together those targets and asked for those evaluations to be made and I'm looking forward to the discussion. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other callers?
No other callers are, have their hands raised.
Okay, just give it two more seconds. Okay, all right. With that, we'll uh, close public comment and move on to presentations. Um, I believe we have the Interface Studio team with us. We see Jamie, Stacy and a few of the other folks. Um, and so yeah, we'll move on to that portion of the presentation.
And let me just get um, with all the supreme control. Okay, um, I think we should have Stacy and Jamie. I see Stacy. I see the beginnings of Jamie. Um, uh, I won't take too much time. Uh, you're going to see a presentation that um, is very similar to that version, which we were able to recently share with the steering committee. Um, Commissioners Hammer Schmidt and Weich um, uh, got that preview as there as part of their role. Um, but with that, um, Stacy, take it away.
Thank you very much. Are you able to hear me?
Yes, we can.
Great. Okay. Always like to start with that line. Um, I, I really appreciate the comments we got this evening. Um, I think that we are all kind of working in alignment. I do want to say that tonight we are pretty focused on the future land use aspect and a little bit less so on some of the other components of the plan. So please, um, the folks who are really pushing for the energy efficiency and A two zero goals uh, don't feel that we are ignoring those comments. Those are certainly a part of the comp plan, but tonight, because we do have limited time, we're going to be very focused on um, where we're thinking about um, in terms of future land use. So here's the agenda for this evening. Um, I will just review briefly the vision and values as a way to lead up to how we've been thinking about the future land use. Um, if there are time, if there's time, then we will also um, go over some of the goals that are emerging. And again, those are also still very high level and they will be in the, in the actual comp plan, be supported by a number of strategies and actions. So next, please. So this is kind of a refresh as, you know, as we spoke of before, we're thinking of this kind of slogan of A two for all um, as a brief way that can then open up into different statements related to our vision and goals and our values. So the next slide shows how we can think about this. Um, basically, you know, being able to say in Ann Arbor, we strive to be affordable, equitable, sustainable. And we've added a fourth dynamic. So the first three affordable, equitable and sustainable were the values that we have been using throughout the process thus far. However, through our community engagement, there has been discussion about, do we need a fourth value? We did talk with this committee um, two months ago and there was some back and forth. Um, and we also talked to our steering committee and we thought, well, perhaps, you know, if we are to think about a fourth goal, it could be something like, something dynamic, um, because we did want to make sure that we captured the sense of a place that is vibrant and alive and evolving. And so dynamic to us felt like a word that could encapsulate that. As opposed to a place that is, you know, a little bit more, um, I think some of the other words that came about were, um, you know, community character and, and livability, which are also great things, but have, don't, don't capture all the things we were trying to capture with this um, fourth value. So I bring this fourth value to this um, committee to review. Um, again, we're still in, you know, our working state, but um, here is how we're evolving thus far. In the next slide, we're trying to think about how do these values work with each other? Um, you know, as we were thinking through this and as some of our callers were uh, clearly pointing out, you know, additional housing really is sort of the foundation of a lot of our ability to achieve many of these values. It's where they intersect. Um, so we've created this as a potential diagram to start explaining how they're interrelated and how there is this foundation of affordable, um, affordability that kind of holds up and combines all the other values. So thinking about housing as being that foundation, which is necessary, we need to increase that in order to attain some of our sustainability goals in order to really address some of our equitable goals and also in order to ensure that we have a dynamic um, city, whether it's in terms of new people, new ideas, new businesses, um, that that can be sustained over time as well. Next. And thinking of those values, then let's walk through how it plays out in our thinking thus far with regard to future land use. So we kind of see it as two larger questions, right? What are we looking to protect? And what are the drivers for change? And so under the bucket of what are we looking to protect, that is, that is mainly in the sustainable bucket with regards to um, natural features um, and, and carbon emissions. As far as the drivers for change, that is, that is where the other three values um, come more into play. And a lot of that is about essentially creating more housing, um, creating more amenities and making more connections um, in order ultimately to create complete neighborhoods. So first, taking a look at what are we looking to protect, we did some analysis with regards to the natural features. And so there are um, several natural features that are in the existing codes. And so we mapped all of those items. You can see I, it's, it's a crazy complicated map. Um, but the, the main point of this is that Ann Arbor is actually doing a really great job of natural features protection. Um, so when we look at this map of the natural features that are of critical importance, we then looked at what are already publicly owned lands. And that is a great majority of those natural features from the previous map. A lot of these intersect with park and open space land. Um, for example, you can see like the green is all the parking open space land and a lot of that is intersecting with the woodlands, of course, or with the wetlands um, and sometimes steep slopes. Um, and then we looked at what was left. And this is what is still in private land hands. And so ultimately, it is a much smaller amount of the natural features. A lot of that is, if you look at this, um, the steep slopes, which is kind of that yellowish color. Um, and a lot of it is fragmented. So the, what is left, I think, um, you know, there is an opportunity for us perhaps to, you know, talk with parks and look at, you know, given their system of criteria to look at opportunities for enhancing what they already have or improving those connections. But the main takeaway is that what is left in private hands is really quite small in comparison and fragmented at this stage. So this is all to say, Ann Arbor has been doing a very good job thus far protecting natural features. Then we're looking at what are the drivers for change? And those again, are really looking at how can we ultimately increase housing? Um, as Brian Chambers mentioned in his comment, you know, we are, we have been thinking roughly about this idea of approximately forty thousand households, right? How can we accommodate about forty thousand households, which could be, you know, given that household size of two point two per household on average, you know, that could be eighty some thousand people, right? Over a twenty-five year span. So that is ultimately um, one of the goals we are trying to think through. And in doing that, thinking about the where and what other kinds of infrastructure and services are going to be needed to handle that. Um, and then also, you know, thank you so much, Shannon, for your comment um, about Wasna. Absolutely. Um, it is not walkable. It, it, it's showing up on our maps and we're calling it out uh, precisely because it's still missing some very important infrastructure uh, in order to actually create a complete neighborhood. Next. So at this point, I would like to hand it over to Jamie and he's going to talk about, you know, some of, some uh, review of the districts that we're looking at um, streamlining and then look, walking us through the steps that we took in order to analyze, you know, what, what are some potential growth areas in the city and what are the missing elements? Such as infrastructure and other things that we need to be thinking about in some potential areas of growth.
Thanks, Stacy. So can everyone hear me? Just thumbs up. Okay, great. Um, so Stacy said, I'm going to talk about that first component affordability and how are we looking to add housing across the city? Um, you know, when you think of the grand scheme of the development process, um, a lot of it is, is out of the city's control, but there's a few small, important components of that process, namely zoning, regulation, infrastructure that really play a critical component. Um, so thinking about how we can impact those within the constraints of, of what we're working with. Um, and this is all stuff that we've shared with you previously, but it's really thinking about really simplifying um, the, the regulations and the classifications, um, and also providing just a lot more flexibility and opportunities for more housing. Um, so thinking about currently the thirty-four zoning districts, can we potentially condense that? Um, these are really the, the districts that emphasize housing. Um, so we envision a low-rise residential district. Um, these are pretty small scale housing, up to three stories, typical of what you see across Ann Arbor. Um, but really potentially adding some more opportunities for housing up to four units, really that missing middle housing. Um, and also opportunities for a small scale commercial. Um, the mixed use transition is really a medium intensity housing. Um, it's mixed use to nature, but also affords the city the opportunity to really build uh, the typical apartment building, you know, you can call it uh, stick over podium or four or one, five over two, kind of that ubiquitous um, housing that's kind of cheap and affordable to build that you see across the country. Um, but also allowing that as a transition in scale between the lower as residential and the mixed use hub, which is really there is the tallest buildings allowed, uh, best transit accesses are really the downtown, current downtown TC one districts. Um, so this is kind of how it plays out um, from the existing land use district translated to these new districts. This is not intended to be a one-to-one translation. Um, but you'll see a lot of the R one through R three. Zoning classifications would then be in the lower as residential. The R four and above and some of the commercial districts would be the mixed use transition. Um, and then again, the mixed use hub is really the downtown TC one districts. Um, and this is what it, you know, that translation on a map looks like. Um, so again, this alone would provide some more flexibility and opportunities for housing. Um, but in a way, it's kind of reinforcing the existing land use. So the question for us and for you, hopefully we can have a discussion tonight is like, are there opportunities where, you know, we should push and opportunities for change across the city? Um, so really is what leads to the next part of the analysis, talking about that complete neighborhoods. Um, as Stacy mentioned, you know, some of the callers references, so hopefully we can talk through it in a little more detail, um, to provide a little more context. Um, but the uh, part of our process is folding in um, the Moving Together Plan. Uh, so they did a similar analysis. They called it twenty-minute neighborhood. You know, there's fifteen-minute city. It's all kind of the same concept. Um, essentially, they analyzed twenty-minute walking distances between a variety of different assets. They looked at grocery stores, uh, retail, parks, schools. They kind of overlaid all that together and you, you get the map on the right. Um, so the darker purple are what they're considered uh, twenty-minute neighborhoods, the lighter purple, purple less. Um, so we wanted to uh, dive into this a little deeper, um, get a little better nuanced understanding of this. Um, I think we can all agree that uh, this is a pretty broad expansion or definition of twenty-minute neighborhood to really fine tune it. or definition of twenty minute neighborhood to really fine tune it. So we did our own analysis. And I will say from the beginning, this is by no means a perfect analysis. It's it's really just a way for us to start a conversation. You can do this analysis in a variety of different ways. You can look at various different assets, you can weight things differently, you know, we could debate that all day long. It's that's not really the intention of of this analysis. It's really, again, just to start a conversation. But we, the changes we made is we we thought was really important to fold transit in. So rapid transit line, these are really defined in that Moving Together Plan. We combined the retail and grocery into just a broader neighborhood goods and services. We focused more on specifically playgrounds within parks. If you look at the previous map, the access to, sorry, access to parks basically covers the entire city. So it's not a particularly useful analysis. So can we fine tune it a little bit? And then we expanded the the schools to really include other public spaces like libraries and other community spaces. So the analysis that we came up with overlays all these together. The darker green are the areas that are, we actually narrowed the walking definitions ten, ten minute walks. So the areas that within a ten minute walk, you can cover all four of those assets we talked about are the dark green. And then going down to red is is where none of those assets are walkable in ten minutes. And Stacy already, you know, called called this out, but Shannon, the caller pointed out very eloquently at the beginning that by no means are these these equal. You know, walking on North Main or on Main Street in downtown is not the same as as walking on Washtenaw. But I, this is useful for us and to know that, you know, there's places that have potential to to provide some of these services and and places for the community, but need major infrastructure investments to really achieve that. So again, this is really just existing assets. But as we're talking about, you know, future land use, you know, what are some of those drivers for change going forward? So we also wanted to do a slightly tweaked analysis of looking at potentially what some of those things that could change this equation. So there's the proposed investments from AAA TA around bus rapid transit, priority bus service. So how does that impact this? It's also impossible to project where retail or neighborhood goods and services will be in thirty years' time. So we took approach of thinking about more of like a node analysis, potential areas where major streets intersect defined by the street classifications, where particularly various bus lines overlap, existing commercial corridors, this like potential areas for commercial activity. And this is, you know, a future projection of of that same analysis. So you'll see areas expand, the same areas that showed up the first time. But because of that added transit, you see places like Stadium, Eisenhower and Packard and places along Plymouth Road. So again, this is really just an intention or the intention really to start a conversation. Thinking about how we can kind of overlay these two things together around that zoning translation, around potential for walkable complete neighborhoods and really, you know, what kind of insight does that provide? You know, where's our overlap, where are their gaps? So hopefully, just we're hoping to spend the majority of tonight just talking about a few interesting things that we we kind of noticed in this analysis. So the first is particular corridors. So there's a lot of corridors that are suitable for development from a complete neighborhood perspective. You know, they they are pretty walkable of access to assets. But don't don't really change from the future translated districts outside of just the more flexibility allowed in the lower as residential. So these are a few examples, you know, these are Miller, parts of Stadium, West Liberty, Washtenaw. You know, they're pretty high traveled corridors, some of the major arteries, but are primarily single family running them. So the question for you all is really, you know, how should we handle roads that are really heavily traveled? But whose primary use is residential? Should it that be the same? Or should this future land use plan say that those areas should be something different? So I might just pause there and see if there's questions specifically towards this or if anything else that we talked about up to this point.
No, thank you, Jamie. Super helpful. And I don't know if any of the commissioners want to kick us off with their thoughts, particularly with respect to this, Commissioner Wetherby.
So relative to this, when you say, and you know, part of me, part of this is colored by the fact that I live on Main Street. So but when you say residential versus something else, does that something else? And I think this goes back and forth in people's heads of is, you know, a high rise apartment, I may not use high rise in quotes, a larger apartment building, is that considered residential? Or when you say something else, is it strictly commercial or? Because I think, and I know people have said that a lot, like, oh, Anna, you know, Main Street doesn't have anybody living there anymore, it's just apartment buildings now. And like, well, that is residential. And so, you know, with that that terminology of, well, should it be residential or something else? What what can, what is the something else that is in your head when you say that?
Yeah, I guess that's a very good, good point. I think when we were, when I, you know, I should have added a little more detail this residential. I think we're thinking, you know, its primary use is single family residential currently. So are there opportunities for increased residential? Or, you know, you bring up a good point, it should there be commercial aspects to some of these corridors too? So that that was our thinking, these these places that are primarily single family residential. Should it be, you know, proximity to major corridors, some bus lines? Should it be something different than a single family residential street?
Okay, so it's more of the building type in a lot of ways than the usage.
Right.
Well, Mr. Leonard.
Yeah, I would add just another way to think about it is going back to that. Just a reminder, one of the things that city council asks us to deliver is a simplified land use framework. And so that's where we're starting with this, you know, you've, Jamie presented sort of three residential districts. And I think I think your question is really good. Another way I think to think about this question here, though, is as part of what we're, as part of what we're conceiving as part of this, even single family districts would, we would be opening up some opportunity through this, through a potential policy statement to allow up to four units, for example, along these corridors and elsewhere in primarily maybe currently single family residential districts. I think one way to think about it is, is that adequate for these corridors? Or do we envision maybe the next level, that sort of transition district, which might allow for a five, seven story model because these areas are being identified as being on transit routes? They're in places that have a lot of those amenities that make them walkable. And so I would say that's another way to approach that. What what would we envision for these corridors going further is we could talk about it in the terms of these potential land use districts.
Gotcha. Thank you, Mr. Leonard, and then Councilmember Dish.
Oh, first of all, I'm sorry, it looks like I had my audio, so you guys have been hearing me banging typing. I'm really sorry about that. So so can I, am I understanding this question? Is it asking this? How should we handle density along roads that are heavily traveled? But whose primary current land use is single family residential?
I certainly think so. And I think we want to center the conversation around land use rather than like the cross section of, you know, bike lanes and protected lanes or anything like that. So really kind of focusing on density of land use on these quarters.
Thank you.
Any other commissioners with thoughts about this? Kind of, kind of a difficult question. Yeah, Commissioner Amersman.
Thank you. First of all, I'm really sorry to you guys that I just had to like bail out of that meeting last Wednesday. Wednesday nights are really hard for me now. Secondly, has anybody noticed that the, like, when you, I have not, I've never looked at maps of Ann Arbor like this. It looks like a human heart, which I just think is really interesting, like all those maps Jamie kept showing. I was like, that's such a
I just noticed that myself.
Right? Yeah, so crazy. I love it. That has nothing to do with your question. So I've been thinking about your question since I heard the presentation last week. And I don't know how it ended up in the meeting with the the steering committee. But I I do think, I mean, this is might be kind of a leading question too. But I do think that these corridors are primed for the the step up, the like, is it mid rise? The mixed use transition.
Transition, we're not they settled or sold on those names yet.
Yeah, the mix, the mixed use transition. Yeah, I mean, whenever I drive down any of these streets, due to like the amount of traffic and frankly, the speed of traffic, I'm always like, man, I would not want a single family house on this street. I feel like do like doing the four to five stories, it helps protect the adjoining neighborhoods from noise of the street. And I think that, you know, similar to TC one, if there is bus crowd, bus transit going down these roads, then adding like a little bit more density in. Obviously, like, and I'm sure you're thinking the same thing, like not to the degree of TC one. But I do think that that mid rise mixed use transitional zone for me on these streets, like in general, and I don't know if it's worth taking like a look more in depth at each street at some point. But I I think that I think that that makes a lot of sense. So I I think that's the way that you guys are leaning and I would, I would agree with that assessment.
Thank you, Commissioner Wetherby, then Mike.
Just to be devil's advocate here, when we talk about adding adding housing to protect other housing, what are we protecting from? So protecting from traffic, protecting from noise. And then if we are protecting some people from that, is that a good thing or a bad thing? Should we really be putting, you know, taller buildings and more density on parks, for example, rather than on streets? It's a different way of looking at things, but we're we're saying instead of having single family houses on a major street, we want to put more residents on a major street to protect the single family houses behind that. And still kind of making those single family houses the the more desirable when really, I mean, I've seen a lot of places that do like much more density along parks. And that is very nice. I mean, it's very, it's very good, it's a very good experience for people living in those, rather than saying, oh, well, we're going to put the high density on the busiest corridor and protect the other. So it's just, it's just, I know it's a, it's a standard and I'm not against putting higher buildings on transit corridors because I think that's how we look at it. But it is just something in this discussion, I'm thinking, well, wait, we're, we're protecting, protecting, you know, what are we doing in that way? Again, putting a lot more people on corridors that have more pollution, have more noise, have more congestion. Is that, is that really what we want to do? It's just, just a thought.
Thank you, Commissioner White.
Thank you. Can, Jamie, can you go back to the four or three? Sorry, yep. I guess it's, it was, I didn't realize it was that far back. Okay, so and I, and I think I had this thought too when I was present with you all on Wednesday. But knowing that I'd have another time to talk to you, I I didn't raise it then, which is one, I I wonder why we are tapping low rise residential to existing height limits in the R districts as opposed to something that might extend maybe from thirty to forty five feet? And the things that I'm thinking about here, so I'm on a very busy street, actually a snow emergency route. And we have a traffic island in front of our house that protects us from the main road. And that, all that land, I I have always envisioned it as row houses because I grew up in the inner city of DC. And you'll see in lots of districts, especially around Capitol Hill area, where they have three story or four story townhouses that are like row homes. And my family owned, members of my family owned those dwellings over my youth. And they were really great and they're fantastic in terms of density. One of the challenges is those things might not be able to be built in the same thirty feet height limit. And so I, I, just a question for why we're preserving that height limit in what are already zoned R districts or like R one districts, I think, is what I'm really concerned about. Given that that's twenty percent of the land mass that's in the city. So the only way we get density there, if I understand you correctly, is with a quadplex that's at thirty feet. And so with twenty percent of the land mass already dedicated to R one, are we really going to be able to achieve the goals that we have set for ourselves to be able to create forty thousand new housing units in that space where a majority of that land is already built? And so it would require teardowns or reconfigurations. And then to that point, and I don't know if this is out of scope, so I'll just say it and move on pretty quickly, which is our our current zoning document, which is separate from the comprehensive plan. But the UDC doesn't allow us to create courts on lots. So a lot of the R one Cs could, at nine thousand square feet, could have up to four dwellings on them. But they have to face the street because a lot of the UDC is carson trick. And so it forces everything to the street as opposed to being able to stack four homes on an R one C lot with a shared sidewalk that would come up, sort of a court. That's how I'm thinking about it. And I've seen that in other places. So to your question, and so we can go all the way back now to your actual question, if you want. I don't know whether Mr. Leonard wanted to jump in now or when I was done, because you put your hand up because apparently I said something to trigger you.
Yeah, no, trigger in a good way. So I just want to clarify, for the low rise residential, we are proposing a slight increase in height, but it's very modest from thirty to thirty five feet. That would be an increase in the base height of a lot of districts. Again, this, we're in the, we're in the sort of determining this phase. But I would, I would, I would appreciate if there are other commission feedback on that question. I think Commissioner White is exactly right. You know, when, on on one person, one hand, the more limiting we are in those districts, the less likely we're going to be able to realize density in them. And I think, I think one of the things that we've established in previous presentations is we're probably talking about a pretty incremental realization of housing in these areas regardless. That's, that's, that's our experience we've had with accessory dwelling units. This is not a place that even in, you know, the communities that you might have heard about that have already made this change to allow a lot of other housing typology. That's not where they're picking up significant amounts of volume of new housing units. But I'd be curious, you know, from my perspective, if even if we don't change the height at all, but we allow a physical structure to be reconfigured from a single unit into multiple units. That is one step towards something. If we provide flexibility for cottage lots where you could put multiple, you know, homes on a lot without it having maybe the same required orientation to the street, that's providing some flexibility again, without necessarily changing the height, but development standards. But I, I wonder if we could just maybe spend just a few minutes on this district. How does, where's, where's the balance of the committee feeling about that? Again, right now, where we're starting it with is a slight increase, providing some very different providing some very different use configuration in there. Do we want to go farther? Do we want to increase the height drastically? I will tell you from previous steering committee meetings, there was a sense that having a, having a, um, led to the history of the scale of these neighborhoods seemed important to some on the steering committee. Even if we are allowing more units, not having the, not leaning too far into, I think some people, when we talk about density, might fear you're going to put a ten-story building in my otherwise single-family neighborhood. Well, forty-five feet is by no means a ten-story building, but it's more than thirty feet. And so, um, I'd be, did I, if we, I think it might be helpful, just, I'd love to hear some other thoughts on even just that district. At risk of hijacking your presentation, Jamie.
I guess I'll chime in a little bit here. Um, Jamie, going back to your original question about what should go on, kind of like highly auto-centric trafficked corridors, mixed-use transition, if I were to be normative. I, I feel a little weird even saying that because I'm like, I'm more focused, I guess, on the process and having a lot of feedback rather than me kind of prescribing what I think should go there. So, um, but I guess, uh, it makes huge transition to me makes intellectual sense. Um, Mr. Leonard, you talked about, um, I think your question was centered around, um, what's the distinction really between low-rise and mixed-use? Is the height, um, sufficient at, you know, uh, forty-five? Am I understanding your question okay or?
My question is, is right now, I envision this low-rise district to be a thirty-five-foot height limit. That's five feet taller than a lot of our residential zoning districts. Is that enough? Would we, should we go higher like Commissioner White was saying? That's, those are some of the kind of, um, I don't, I don't want to say we have to answer all the questions, but the more of those questions that we answer when we are creating our future land use districts, that really sets us up for the right focus on our implementation strategy down the road.
Gotcha. And I guess my, uh, like immediate response would be to, um, somewhat follow like Michigan building code guidelines. I mean, when we saw, uh, for example, block would come, you know, they're using all strict stick construction at four stories, right? So forty-eight feet is kind of what they're targeting. So, um, providing enough flexibility for what incrementally makes sense from like an economic, um, standpoint of performers. So to me, um, but that, that, that there's a, you know, obviously the balancing act with, you know, what people believe to be the driving character of, you know, a specific area. And I, I think the trade-off here is at four stories, it could feel tall. I agree with that. Um, but I think what it comes down to is provision of sunlight, porosity, and like successful public spaces where people could still get light, because I, I, you don't want people just like being able to walk in, you know, shadowed corridors essentially. Um, so I think it, it ultimately has to do with the, um, the setback provision of natural light. Um, uh, I, I do think that ultimately a driving part of this is having healthy communities, and I think that is exposure to um, greater amounts of light and public space activation. So if that forty-eight feet, then I think the trade-off needs to be that there needs to be, um, more of a focus on, um, the, the accessibility to parks, for example. So I don't know that necessarily I'm answering your question in a, a direct format, but, um, I guess for me, low-rise, um, or, uh, low-rise would be forty-eight feet, mixed-use would be kind of that like seventy-two where it's a podium light gauge or podium, a stick-on podium. Um, and then mixed-use hub is like that type one A kind of, uh, flexibility. So, um, so to, to me, like forty-eight, seventy-two to eighty-four, or something like that. I, you know, again, I'm throwing out kind of normative numbers of the construction types that drive this type of, um, or, and you know, because like you're limited at thirty feet, like maybe it just economically doesn't make sense and it doesn't happen. So, um, I would tend to follow kind of the normative building code, um, impositions of height of how high you can go. Um, and then make certain kind of like maybe character overlays. I know we did that with the Southview and I know the whole idea is to simplify, but, um, if, you know, I think we should kind of follow overriding Michigan building code, um, as far as height goes with, uh, with a nod to health, character, um, and those kinds of considerations. So before, yeah, four, forty-eight, eighty-four, um, and then, you know, one eighty-three hundred, I don't, I don't know. Uh, but, uh, so that, that would be, you know, my, my two cents, um, or at least off the cuff response. And I'll, I'll kick it over to Commissioner Weatherby.
Yeah, I think from my perspective, the difference between like thirty feet or I guess thirty to forty-eight, if Commissioner Lee, I'll take the, the sort of three to four story. I live around a lot of those and the sort of differences are, are minimal. If you're in a one or two-story house next to either a thirty-foot building or a forty-eight-foot building, it doesn't really matter, like your experience kind of on the street is the same. I can, I can see, I, I, I mean, I don't know that limiting to thirty feet, especially because Ann Arbor has a lot of dips and hills and, you know, the sort of experience from the street or experience from the neighbor is, is going to be really very depending on those. And it, it just, I don't think there's much, if, if we think we can add another story in to all of these districts, I don't see how it's going to be much different of an experience to the people living there now or the people living there in the future, whether it's thirty feet or forty feet. You know, I think those are pretty minimal differences for the experience for the people in the area. So I guess, I would say, I don't, I don't see that those kind of differences are going to be big. I think the difference between thirty feet and sixty feet is going to be a big, big difference, but but not thirty to forty-five or forty-eight.
Thank you. I really appreciate that interlude. Commissioner White, sorry for the interruption of your stream of thought.
No, it, it's great. Uh, you, you actually went in a way that I was not expecting you to go. So I, I, I appreciate that. And and then Chair Lee went even further. He gave three extra feet to my forty-five. So I, I feel, I feel enriched uh, by the conversation. Thank you. Uh, so, so summing up, my recommendation then is low-rise, could be forty-eight feet and under. And to your earlier question of what we should do on, um, I would say non-TC one, but high-traffic spaces. I think, um, that those would sort of flow out of where their current districts are. So if they're primarily R1s, I would expect them to flow into this low-rise residential. Um, if they are, yeah, because I think most of those will be sitting in some R1, maybe some R2s exist in there. But the other thing I was wondering about, and I know that the comp plan should speak to you, is there may be opportunities for us to address those streets on the interior, uh, in terms of their traffic and their ease of, um, speed in those spaces. So, uh, as we write out the comp plan, we could envision, um, making those streets safer. And I don't, uh, Commissioner Dish, um, or, uh, Councilmember Dish can uh, chime in, because I don't know what the term is on some of the streets, because I know there was an initiative during COVID where they sort of blocked off certain streets and tried to, uh, reduce traffic and speed through those. And I don't know if we called those complete streets. I'm, I'm just trying to remember what the language was for it, but, so, so there could be opportunities for us to rethink about, uh, how those roads actually operate. Uh, because I thought the, the caller who spoke at the beginning, who, um, just gave us a, a sort of a visual, helped us create a visual uh, picture of the auditory landscape that they live in. I thought that that was, that was really great. Um, and I appreciated the time, intervals of when those things sort of occur. So some, as we move towards this density, I think, um, part of what we could be doing as we imagine the land use is, are there ways for us to slow down traffic? Or reduce traffic, which goes towards our vehicle miles, uh, travel to, uh, objectives, reducing those. It can also go towards our, um, uh, vision zero, where we are not having car and pedestrian or biker interactions. And that as we look ahead twenty-five years, um, are we removing lanes of traffic and replacing lanes of traffic with buses or streetcars or other modes of transit, so that we're not just committing ourselves, uh, to a car-based future? So tho- those are my thoughts around your specific question.
Uh, thank you, Commissioner White. Um, and Jamie, if it would be possible to fast forward to that, um, the four pictures that you had up, but I do think that it's tough for us to, um, extricate, um, you know, the, the cross-section of the road, um, from the land use. So try to really kind of focus on the land use component of it, but you know, uh, what I like about like the, for example, Stadium Liberty Miller is, um, you have trees that insulate the pedestrian pathway from the cars, um, and as well as, uh, bike lanes, whereas Washinau, and the closest thing is you have a great separation, but that's about it, that separates. And so creating safety, um, great separations or even physical barriers, um, that helps to provide a sense of designation of multimodal transportation, I think is important. Um, the other thing that I thought about was as far as we talk about, you know, low-rises, mid-rises, um, what, what's the feedback from like fire, uh, departments, feedback of like how much, you know, how high do they have to go? Uh, it's easier to put out fires, you know, and, um, you know, mid-rises or low-rises. And so um, is there parts of our infrastructure that may not be able to support, you know, higher density, just based on the smaller, uh, you know, street size. So I guess the, the, the two kind of discrete points that I was hoping to make there is that, on these heavily-traveled roads, um, in concert with land use that supports or, uh, you know, support uh, higher flexibility and denser, uh, um, housing would be to say we should have a concerted effort on the preservation of public space activation, um, safety of the pedestrian, uh, separation, uh, like basically the complete streets that we were talking about. With, uh, whether it's great separation, um, or even trees that help to, you know, create that kind of safety uh, application. And then, um, to also think about kind of like what utility infrastructure slash implications there are in serving, you know, the low mid-rise buildings. I don't, my, my immediate fire is just on like fire. Is there any kind of implications? If they are seven stories on Miller, right, or something like that? Just as a thought experiment, are there issues that arise from that, um, that wouldn't otherwise allow, uh, something to be built in that respect? So, um, just two, two thoughts on my end, but yeah, how should we handle roads that are heavily traveled? I think we need to create legibility that they are, you know, we recognize that they're auto-centric corridors, but I also, I also think that we need to take that a step further and ask, why do people travel so much on that particular road, right? And is it because they don't have, you know, they don't feel safe riding that bike or, and so my, where my thought is going is what is the unintended consequence of rezoning this to a higher density use? Um, does it become less, uh, you know, able to be, uh, traverse? So that does it redirect that, you know, primary auto-centric traffic to the neighborhoods as a cut-through? And so I think holistically understanding why there is, uh, you know, a stronger sense of auto-centric traffic. And then thinking about the unintended potential consequences of reverting, um, or I think, uh, what do we call it? Trip, uh, like a trip diet. I can't remember the exact phrase, but, um, you know, induced demand, for example, right? Don't widen the necessary street. You're just going to invite more traffic, but just understanding that kind of interzonal flow uh, between like demand and attraction and production zones of trips. So, um, how do we handle these particular roads, um, from a land use perspective? I think we still need to understand where are the trips being generated? And where are they, you know, attracting to? Why do people use this? And what might be a consequence of going four or five stories here? So anyways, I've talked a lot. So any other commissioners, how with thoughts on this particular topic? Yes, Councilmember Dish.
Thank you. Yeah, I'm, I'm listening a lot. Um, I, I did want to go back to the question of the, the, um, low-rise residential that we're talking about. And, um, I do want to second what Commissioner Weatherby said about the difference between a three and a four-story building, because I'm really aware of this when I'm in other cities. How little it bothers me to have a four-ish story apartment next door to or a block over from single-family homes. I don't, I don't think that that's significant. I think it will be, it, it may feel, um, it, it may seem like a big leap for people who are reading it on paper, but one of the things, Mr. Leonard, that you said when you were framing your question was that you did not think that, uh, you know, that, that it would be, that change along these, i- in these areas is going to be slow and incremental, no matter what we do. And I don't know if you, if, if I, yeah, you want to, did I misunderstand? Would you want to say more there?
I guess I want to, I want to emphasize that I think change would be incremental in our R1 and R2 districts, if we were to allow up to four units. I think that change would be slow and incremental. I think the more avenues that we provide, maybe it's increased height, maybe it's different configurations. I think those are factors that could increase the rate of unit realization in those areas, but I still think that it's relatively modest in those circumstances because it is so much land and not everybody will make that choice. I do think that if we talk about these corridors adjacent to transit, uh, significant, um, both vehicular, transit, bicycle, walking routes into the center of the city. If we are providing, if we are zoning these for, say, uh, you know, seventy-eight or eighty-four, or whatever the number is, um, I th- I think that there's probably more potential for units along those corridors, depending how it's realized. That is, if I, I think looking, for example, at building codes as a, um, as a factor is really appropriate. You have to, when you're going to build something in the city, you have to meet the zoning code and you just need to meet the building code. For us to have those in alignment, I think there's a lot of logic to that when we can. But on the same time, we're looking at these districts, particularly this, this sort of mid, mid, mid-rise district as very much a transitional district, and we're really envisioning it as very referential. So it might follow a very similar course to our existing TC one, whereas you get closer to lower-rise residential, it might have stepbacks. And so I think on some of these corridors, opening it up to that mid-rise, I think could be a faster way to realize units than low-rise multiple units in the neighborhoods. But I, I also want to be honest that a lot of these, because they're single-family, they're not particularly deep lots. So you might be talking about having to assemble lots to do something at a larger scale. Because they're not particularly deep lots, they might, depending how those regulations get in place, they might step down relatively quickly compared to Washinau or Plymouth, where we have the TC one. So sorry, that's a long way of saying, I see these corridors as probably being less incremental and slow than single-family neighborhoods realizing more duplexes and quadruplexes. That's, that's sort of the headline of how I would categorize my incremental approach.
Okay, then, that was helpful that you expounded on that. And, um, I think that I was referring to, I had taken your comment to refer to the single-family residential. And I think that we have, you have explained this to me before, that when there is something of, well, actually, yeah. Where there are homes there and they aren't falling down, I don't know that we're going to see a lot of change anytime soon in single-family neighborhoods. Because you can make plenty of money off of those and they're desirable. There's a market for them. So, um, and I guess my concern, and I don't know that there's anything, because we can't prohibit anything, but and, and I, uh, my concern is that what we are seeing in those areas is just people putting bigger, taller houses on On those lots where there used to be smaller, more modest houses. And, and I don't think that anything that we are doing here or that we can do here can change that trend. I mean, I don't know. I don't know if we, if there's any way we could say, wait, make a fourplex instead of a McMansion. You know, I, I don't suppose we can do that, but it, it is a concern that that's what's happening in our residential neighborhoods. And, and I don't know how to get it to be more efficient.
Well, we, we start by allowing it.
Uh, yeah, Commissioner White.
Yeah, I was just gonna echo, um, Councilmember Dish's, uh, concerned around the neighborhood. And I think the term is big footing. So they, they take a, a small lot and then big-footed into, uh, a single unit. And I think some of the ways we can do that, um, de-incentivize that is by having smaller lot sizes. And higher, um, height limits, uh, where they're not, um, gonna block out people's sun. And I don't think we're gonna get, um, a lot of sun blockage at forty to forty-eight feet. I think, um, folks are gonna be able to have a lot of sunlight. And I think that's, that when I'm in the room with folks, when they think about these things, to your point earlier, when you're in other cities. That's what we hear is, um, I sort of bought this house because I got this beautiful. You know, sun exposure, and now you're going to allow my neighbor to build so high and tall that I'm not going to be able to get that sun. And so having, um, something that's modest in the, you know, forty to, uh, forty-eight feet, uh, range. I feel like addresses that, but.
Gotcha. Thank you. Um, and just checking in on time, Stacy and Jamie, how much more? Like how, what percentage of the presentation are we through right now? Cause this is the first question we've run that.
Um, we have about four of these questions from like the land use. Um, you know, we, we threw the goal stuff on there, but. I don't think, we, I think we're acknowledging, we probably weren't gonna get to that anyway. So there's, there's really like three, three more of these land use questions to get through.
Gotcha. Um, do you think that we've, and I'm so sorry, my dog is kind of like. Yeah, I thought he threw up for a second. Um, uh, do you think that you've gotten kind of what you've wanted out of this particular question at this point or?
Yeah, I think so. Um, I mean, uh, you know, I guess there's been two parts to the conversation. Um, I, I guess from like the, the low-rise residential. I think that if, you know, we were thinking of it as up to four units. Um, but if the, you know, I think that the height limits and like the unit counts have to kind of go hand in hand. Cause you know, you could allow a ten-story building, but if it's still capped at four units, probably no one, nobody's really gonna build that. So I, I guess that's, it's not just like, are you allowing higher buildings, but do you think four units is appropriate?
Yeah, no, I think I, the, the consensus would be, no, we wouldn't necessarily want to limit it to that. Um, and so, I mean, again, like if, if we're talking about increasing housing density, a four-unit limit obviously wouldn't be conducive to that. Uh, but I, is, is I then indicated that there is, um. If, in, in, you know, with, with increased density on these, the thing that I just want to highlight, it becomes more and more important, I think, for us to. Um, provide more options for more multimodal transit and that, the reason for that is just that there's greater trips being generated out of here. So I don't want to throw, you know, twenty cars onto this road. Um, and so I think the complete streets and, and mirroring, or at least, um, growing together. Uh, with, uh, transportation policy in that respect is really critical. Um, so, uh, but yeah, though Jamie, to answer your question, no, I think, uh, having a four-unit limitation would be kind of, well. It would be kind of meaningless, I suppose, um, and then be antithetical to the idea of increasing greater heights. So.
Yeah. Yeah. I mean, I guess like, like, do you think there should be limits on the number of units? Or should it be solely controlled by the form of the building? Like, should you limit the size of the building, which inherently limits the number of units? Should, you know, should we take that approach or, you know, with stacks and heights and, you know? I- is that how we should control or should it be unit counts? It sounds like maybe not unit counts more so based on form.
Commissioner Weatherby.
Yeah, I think, uh, what we've seen in the past is doing unit counts ends up with the biggest units possible. Not the best unit configuration possible. And so. You know, if we allow four, that's going to be four, six bedrooms. But if we allow. Heights, then you'll get, you know, maybe a, a studio and a one-bedroom and a two-bedroom and a six-bedroom. That kind of are more potentially useful going forward. Um. So I always am a little nervous by units, but then if you say, well, okay, you get one. I don't know. I, I think it's, it's easy to say unit, but we haven't seen unit be a very good. Outcome. It ends up forcing a lot of decisions. That don't really work necessarily around the city.
Yeah, uh, thank you. Um, I think that makes sense to me as well that, uh. I, I think really again tethering and mirroring Michigan building code to me again has logic, safety. Considerations, um, that I, I think any developer or builder are gonna need to follow. And so, um, so yeah, just a spurious saying, hey, we, we want to limit by unit as opposed to. Um, inputting some, certain levels of logic around what type of unit, like, you know, mix will lease. And so I guess I'm, I'm more on the side of like F I, F A R, um, and height governing. As opposed to a, in straight imposition of number of units, um, especially if we don't know the context of the site. The configuration of the floor plan, et cetera. So, um, so yeah, uh, from that's, uh, perspective. I, you would think that again, Michigan building code as well as best architectural practices, um, would be better to govern that. Than a, a spurious or somewhat generalized imposition of unit max. Uh, have we answered any other commissioners with thoughts on that particular question as it relates to unit count caps? In certain zones. And is not seeing anyone, um, Jamie, would, would you wanna, do you think that we've sufficiently attacked that one? And then, uh, would you wanna keep moving forward?
Sure.
Okay. And then just as a quick heads up, I do have to head out of here at eight-thirty, at which point, uh, Commissioner White, if you can. I still have to get to Grand Rapids tonight. So I'm like, it's kind of a long drive from Ann Arbor, so.
Okay, um. So this, this next question is, it's almost like the inverse of what we're just talking about in, in a way. And that it's really places that, you know, the zoning translation, um, shows potential for. You know, uh, significant added density. These are, you know, the TC one areas, uh, the downtown. Um, but places that don't really register from the, the walkability perspective. You know, thinking about Briarwood or State Eisenhower, you know, or, you know, what are the things that need to be done down there? If we're adding a bunch of new housing to really create these complete neighborhoods, does, do we need to reintroduce the street network? Do, does there need to be investments in parks or schools or, or whatever it is? Um, thinking about stadium, you know, the triple ATA doesn't have, uh, in their future plans. Don't have significant changes for rapid transit on, on stadium. So, you know, can that, uh, district ever really be like a transit corridor district if you don't make those investments? Um, plays on sim- similar questions on, on Plymouth Road too. Um, so I, the question really being, you know, what are some of the strategic investments? The city needs to make to create complete neighborhoods in these areas. We've already talked about this a little bit about, you know, the actual streets. And, and what needs to be done there, but just thinking, uh, curious if you have additional thoughts on, on some of those areas specifically.
I can probably kick us off on this one. I talked about this at Transportation Commission as well, but the utilization of linear parks. I know our parks and recs, um, very, very robust, but there are specific areas where, um, you know, I think. Uh, residents have to walk more than two thousand feet to get to a park. A lot of it's actually kind of in that area, stadium, state Eisenhower, um, et cetera. And I think the, um, for me, what's important is to provide safe recreation, um, that's, you know, beautiful and accessible in that way for people. And so, uh, to me, I think the utilization of linear parks how, helps to create kind of like insulated, uh, you know, whether it's. On one of the lanes or in the right-of-way, or whether it is, you know, we strategically choose like a specific linear park to create. Um, I, I've said Oak Brook, uh, in the past, um, where the Edwards Brothers property used to be. Um, but that, the, the strategic use of linear parks can help create connectivity recreation. So it, it kind of kills two birds with one stone with respect to, um, it's not the greatest, uh, saying. But, um, essentially, you know, uh, recreation, access to parks as well as transportation. Um, and that it can be used as, you know, a specific, uh, areas for people to, um, go to their, uh, places of work. And so, um, that wayfinding, um, I would think that, uh. Uh, you know, uh, looking, looking at re- reviewing risk reduction strategies on five, sixty-foot cross-sections. I'm looking at these, uh, these are pretty, uh, significant, but, um. So that, that would be, you know, my initial thoughts and then I'll actually hold the floor to other commissioners. Any other commissioners with thoughts on what strategic investments to make, to make a complete neighborhood? Commissioner Weatherby.
I'm like chatty tonight, I guess. Um. I think one of the things, and I think it's clear from these pictures, even though I think most of these, and I'm looking and I've walked on a lot of them. They actually have pretty good sidewalk infrastructure. You can get easily as a pedestrian from one place to another. But they're, they're, they're big and they are very car-centric. And so even the view of how, they don't feel like a complete area. Because they feel like a place to get from one place to another. And, and they don't feel like an entity in themselves. And while I think recreation is good and parks is good, parks are also like, it's kind of sketchy to walk by at night. If you're, you know, trying to get your milk from whatever grocery store or, um. And so I think some sort of. And, and maybe it's almost more of a psychological thing, but that the built infrastructure has to, uh. Pia, I mean, maybe a complete neighborhood, it's fine if that, that complete neighborhood is entirely car-centric. But I think generally we look at a complete neighborhood being someplace that's walkable or non-motorized transit. And these places don't look like that. We've put in sidewalks, so that's good. But those sidewalks are sort of like sidewalks from where to where. And, and having a sense of place and a more, um. You know, where it's not just cars and that you prioritize sort of a more human scale, whether that's buildings closer to the streets. Or wayfaring or, or lit-up bus stops or something that is a little bit less just car-centric.
Thank you. Uh, Commissioner Hammer Schmidt.
Thank you. So I guess my question is, what are the options in terms of strategic investments that the city can make? Because I think to Commissioner Weatherby's point, like sidewalk infrastructure is not bad. We've rezoned all of these to TC one and my frame of reference primarily is Plymouth, cause I live really close to Plymouth. And half of the court, like the southern half of the corridor is all university-owned property. So like, until we really see developments start to happen, I think that is what's gonna bring in like more people, more small businesses. More large businesses, more businesses, um, closer to the street to maybe start to have that feeling that we all. Think people want of like a, a more walkable feeling thing and places you can walk to. So I guess my question back is like, I don't know what else the city should be thinking about since like we've already, we've already rezoned.
A good question. And, uh, yeah, Stacy.
Um, I think, oh, wait, I'm, okay. I think, um, the pictures are all very street-focused. But, um, if you think back to the analysis of complete neighborhoods, the other, the other items that were in there were community. Uh, meeting spaces, whether they were recreation centers or schools or, um. Libraries, you know, those kinds of community spaces and then also parks, which, um, Commissioner Lee mentioned in the linear park. Um, idea, but I think it's partly, and this might be related to, to that, you know, conversation of. There are a lot of parks and open spaces in Ann Arbor. And going back to the whole, like, what are we trying to protect and the natural features and how much the city already has? Um, but it's also a question of where is it distributed? And so it's not, maybe not so much distributed here in some of these places that have been designated for future growth, right? So that's part of like this idea of strategic investment, um, where yes, some of it is roadway stuff. But also like some of those other public types of spaces. Um, that on the one hand, you know, there was a conversation about are all of our public lands being used the way that. That, you know, are best serving the city? Are they distributed in, in the best way? But also if we are trying to grow. What are some of the targets that we need to be thinking about in terms of those public spaces?
Gotcha. Um.
Can I, can I keep going? And you, you probably have to leave, right?
I, I do have to get out. Just a quick clarification on my end about the use of linear parks. And it can be something as easy as, you know, just like a row of planters next to the actual sidewalk, right? But giving that sense of more of a completed, uh, you know, there's separation and refuge of the pedestrian. Or the protection of, uh, pedestrians from kind of the auto-centric nature. So I'll throw out road diets, right, where appropriate. Um, obviously, again, sixty-foot cross-sections are always gonna be difficult. Um, and so, uh, the, and you are a hundred percent right, Stacy. That, um, a lot of the park concentration is kind of on the north side, right? Whether it's northwest or northeast. And so kind of thinking through, um, I mean, is it pickleball courts that are community-based? I mean, I don't, I don't know that that's, uh, the correct answer either, but, um, I think Sarah's question of, uh, Commissioner Hammer Schmidt's question of, okay, what? Um, what should we be thinking about from a strategic investment standpoint? What, what's, what's reality and what's, you know, um. Uh, also just a, a pie in the sky dream kind of thing. All of that said, I do have to get out of here. Thank you so much, guys. Commissioner White, it's all yours. Thanks, guys.
Safe travels. I guess I'll just, a couple more sentences. I, I mean, again, like Plymouth Road is gonna be my like, my, my focus here. Cause it's one of the, I'm most familiar with, but like, there is a library up there. There are lots of schools. So like for me, I really do think that it is not so much like what strategic investments the city should make. And this might be different for Eisenhower. I don't know. Um, but like, I feel like, like we're primed. For more development that I think will bring the things that are, like the things that we're missing on Plymouth are an ice cream shop. Um, like that first caller talked about, like, like things like that where, where it's not really these community, maybe like a good gym. I don't know. But I, I feel like that stuff will come, like as developers find it easier to develop more dense. Buildings, I hope. Maybe the city could look at land swapping with the university and taking some of that frontage on Plymouth and like develop it. So I don't know. Otherwise, I mean. I, I, this question like specifically, like what strategic investments should the city make? Like, I guess I'm still, I'm not answering your question. Cause like, I'm not really sure what the city could do other than make development easier. And I feel like we're trying to do that.
Yeah, I might just want, add one thing that came up in the steering committee was like, what are we asking of private developers? To incorporate into their, their work? Like, you know, what is the vision that we're outlining? Um, are we saying that, you know, when you go through your development process, like you should include some open space? Or you should reconnect some of the streets in a certain way? So like, what are those priorities that we can kind of establish in this process that potentially, like you said, what can the city do? You know, there are, some of these things could potentially be, be done through the, you know, private development process as well.
Commissioner Dish.
I'm really glad, um, for Commissioner Hammer Schmidt's first question, which is what can the city do? Because if I'm understanding correctly, some of these places where we have. The least residential density, the city is going to need to upgrade basic infrastructure. Like storm and, um, and. and, uh, sewer water. I mean, that isn't the way it works, but anyway, pipes, that's going to be super expensive. And so, I, I, I mean, I think, I think some of, part of that question, the answer is, is already evident because it, those parts of town weren't, aren't, aren't ready for, or are going to need to be upgraded for residential density. I mean, if you wanted me to give you a wish list, I would like to see a, uh, a, 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 a big planting in the middle, a median, a median with flowers in it, running the entire length of Plymouth Road. That's what I would really like. And I would like protected bike lanes on both sides. Um, because as more and more people adopt things like e-bikes, these roads are great for riding and that's where you need to ride to go to the grocery store. And you're not going to do that. You know, you're going to do it, you're going to do it in your e-bike or you're going to do it in your, whatever you decide for your second car. I mean, I'd rather people do e-bikes for their second car. And those roads right now are terrifying. I mean, Plymouth even is just, I know that I, I say this all the time. I use the word terrifying all the time. But I mean, I do bike on them and I find them frightening. And it's extremely off putting. Like I can't imagine relying solely on a bicycle right now. But you know, man, if we, if it were prettier and we had protected bike lanes and they're really wide, so why can't we do that? Um, and yeah, maybe that's the kind of thing we could ask developers to kick in a little bit for. But again, we have a tension here because we already do ask developers to do a lot. Um, we, we do make them responsible for infrastructure replacements and upgrades that the city feels as though, you know, we don't have enough of the resources for. And then then you don't necessarily get the prettiest buildings that you want or the kinds of, you know, maybe, yeah, the unusual features in the buildings, you know, you get more standard construction and residents don't like that. They, you know, they want things to be pretty. They don't want it to all of a sudden just look like a bunch of black boxes or, you know, windows with boxes or concrete in boxes, right? And, and I don't know that that's unreasonable. So this is a huge question that I just, I, I, it just makes me feel a little bit trapped because whatever we do, we're going to have some effects that, that we wish didn't happen from. Yes, good. Stop me.
Mr. Leonard.
I would never stop you. But I, I just want to, I want to maybe remind, I hope it's remind, is that there will be infrastructure decisions that we need to be transparent about in this comprehensive plan. And that'll include very expensive things if we want to add forty thousand households, seventy-five thousand people. Um, just to reiterate, we're having those with other members of city staff. Councilmember Dish, I know you are aware that, you know, we have some planning efforts going on with some, specifically some of our infrastructure systems. But I just want to be upfront, we are an old city, two hundred years, I'm told. And we have a lot of old infrastructure and that's going to be part of the, you know, that is not independent of us visioning what we could see happening in different jagged spaces of the city. The corollary to that might be big hairy expensive decisions that we have to make. Maybe it's to implement those bike lanes on both sides of the street. Maybe it's to put that, a new water main in somewhere or a sanitary sewer. So, um, I just, I think this conversation is important. I think, I think part of, of, part of the tension that maybe Commissioner Hammer Schmidt and Dish is having is, yeah, you can envision all sorts of things, but we know that there, we don't have this like unlimited checkbook that we can do it. And so, um, that's part of, I, I think that's, it's, it's okay to recognize that. And I think it's helpful to recognize that, but we, we have to find the balance in this plan that identifies those goals and the corollaries of what it might mean for us to prioritize in order to achieve those. And so, um, that's kind of what, you know, I mean, we're starting big and this is a great conversation, but that's part of the purpose of these conversations here is to say like, what are the tipping point? You know, in an area that has the uses, but doesn't have the infrastructure. Is it bike lanes? Is it, is, as Commissioner Hammer Schmidt just said, waiting till the private development happens? And then we answer that question later. Um, we're going to have to make some decisions on, on that. Um, and, and the decisions are going to be different in different areas of the city and these different target areas. So I, not helpful, doesn't answer it, but I want, I want to, I guess, I want to give you permission to recognize that part of this comprehensive plan visioning is to identify what our vision is. And part of our job is part, is part of that is to not only inform you, but the public and event, and the council. In order to achieve this goal, X, Y, or Z is going to have to happen. Um, and I think, I think that'll be, that'll be the best plan. That is both, um, visionary and honest about what it's going to take to get there. So what could we do there? We could change that street. We could change that sidewalk. Um, um, maybe it's that, maybe this tension tells us that we're not going to be able to answer all those questions on those corridors. And that should be part of our follow-up is that the next, the next part of this is we need to have that deep dive on Plymouth to figure out exactly what we're going to do in order to realize that and what those costs are going to be. So, um, I know it's hard. It's hard because you're being very responsible, um, rightfully so, but and, and we could, we could adopt a plan that is limited by no vision in that regard. We don't have the money to do X, Y, or Z ever. So let's not try. Um, that's part of, that's part of this exercise. You know, we, we have done the land use along Plymouth, for example. What do we vision? Like, what do we envision to, to close the gap? And it, it might be, you know, the transportation plan doesn't get into that level of detail. Maybe it's time for this comprehensive plan to say, when we're talking about priority transit quarters on, uh, on Plymouth, we mean bike lanes in both directions. We mean, um, off-street paths. Um, I think it's okay to, the question teed up is to, is to be ambitious in that regard.
Thank you, Mr. Leonard. Uh, for my part, I will say what I said on Wednesday last, which is, uh, we often ask developers to contribute to our park fund and we have a surplus of parks, uh, more than we can currently maintain at a hundred and sixty-two. And I thought, oh, maybe we shift our focus, uh, to do the things that we want to do. I think Commissioner Dish, uh, has identified some things I would support, bike lanes. Uh, but I would also, um, just say again, it might be worth us looking at how we create multimodal transit. So maybe that's a street car that runs up and down Plymouth. Um, maybe it's a circular that moves, uh, folks from Plymouth into the interior without, um, folks having to have a car so that we would have, uh, more housing in places where people do not have to rely on a car in order to move around. And if the city, that is to say, the legislative body is the one that is initiating it, I think there are benefits. Um, putting us all on a bus together, uh, can build community. We're going to see our neighbors. We're going to be interacting with people. We're going to be walking. We're going to be waiting, uh, at stations. And those things create both place and opportunity for us to connect with each other, which I think are things that we want to do in the city. So that is it. I think you have two more questions. If you want to try them in our, uh, seventeen minutes that we have allocated, I think we try to be done by nine. Uh, though I don't know how hard and fast we stay to that, but I do not want to keep us. I would rather someone else do that. So back to you, Jamie.
Okay. Um, so this next question is, uh, and this came up in the, with the callers early on, are really these areas that kind of don't register from either perspective? You know, they, the zoning translation doesn't necessarily say it should get a lot denser outside of, you know, the tweaks we're talking about to the low-rise residential. It, but it also doesn't have a lot of potential from, uh, being a complete neighborhoods due mostly to the fact that they're primarily single family, um, not a lot of access to commercial spaces or transit. Um, so what are the, you know, what are we doing about those areas? Um, and there's, there's, this is kind of a two-part question. So it's, it's thinking about those areas that are kind of established neighborhoods, but then also thinking about, um, I don't know if you can see my cursor, but the area like along the riverfront that isn't, in this, um, circle is probably a little broader than, uh, I guess we were thinking. But like, the areas that are kind of a transition between downtown adjacent to the river could be a connection to, um, future development on North Campus. Um, you know, there's been talks through the decades about the Fuller roadside and, you know, going back and forth about should it be Amtrak? Um, what should happen on that? You know, well, it's technically a park space, but is, um, really a parking lot? You know, how do we better utilize, um, existing assets, city assets? So it's kind of like a, there's two distinct, um, parts of this question. But, you know, should these areas that, um, you know, should the city seek to change these, some of these areas to address some of these broader goals? Or should they mostly stay the same? Uh, is it, is it too far or too challenging to really address some of those, those places?
Right. Who would like to kick us off here? Commissioner Weatherby.
Sure, I'll do it. Um, so on this map, if I look at this, the, the four circles map here, three of them, I think we just let be and go along and do what we need to do. Um, you know, within the, the low-rise residential, only because there's so much, I think, as we talked about in the previous one, so much sort of pent up demand in the corridors, like the Plymouth Road and stadium and, and that kind of, if we pay attention to those corridors, it actually picks up some of these neighborhoods as they become more, more complete. But the one, the downtown, the, the Fuller Park, U of M Hospital, Center of Campus one, I think that to me is actually not a place that, it, it doesn't fit into this for me. There's schools there, there's parks there, like the, sort of the most uh, beloved parks. There's, there's food and grocery and so I don't quite understand why that, that center circle is there. But for the ones that, the other ones, like I think we have enough on our plates to make the pent up demand places better. That I think it's okay to have some areas that aren't a big focus. We don't want them to be left behind. And I think with the low-rise residential changes, they can come along, but I don't know that we need to focus on those areas. I think maybe that's the, the plan for, you know, twenty fifty, when they look at, at it and say, what do we do now and bring those areas along? That would be my recommendation is, like on this, the three, but the one down, the one that's kind of downtown Plymouth Road transition, I think, should have more attention to it.
Yeah, I mean, it's, in, in hindsight, we probably should split that. We were trying to prove, you know, restrict the number of questions in slides. So we kind of, we're trying to figure out the best way to, to think about that area and like, you know, think bigger picture, like what is the relationship of downtown to the river? Um, you know, should we better utilize city assets that are adjacent to some, you know, uh, that are adjacent to downtown or, or the river? Um, but yeah, that, they are pretty distinct. And in hindsight, we should have kind of probably separated them out to different questions.
Other commissioners.
Go ahead. Commissioner Hammer Schmidt.
I'll just agree, um, with what Commissioner Weatherby said, to underscore it a little bit. I think, I think that's in our circle. I mean, there, there's a lot going on there right now anyway. And I think that there are more, more could and should happen in the future. Um, but I agree with her assessment on the other three, I think. Leave them be. They'll be, for on cents and purposes, upzoned. Um, and let's, let's focus on other areas.
Anything from you, Commissioner Dish? So for my part, I'm going to deviate and say, uh, we may have, uh, an opportunity for land acquisition if Concordia, uh, attempts to divest. And that might be a opportunity for the city. Um, I've been hearing a lot in this political climate about opportunity zones. I don't actually know what that means per se. Like I, I know what the words mean, but I don't know what they mean uh, when a speaker is using them. So I'm going to define it myself to say, you know, the city has, um, public land in the largest, you know, uh, circle there that includes Concordia. And here on Hills with the golf course and would there be an opportunity for the city to designate some of that public land as an opportunity zone where we might encourage the kind of complete neighborhood development that is absent. So that might bring commerce into that space because there are schools and parks and natural features that are already there, but there's not as much commerce, uh, that sits in that, uh, geography. And so, uh, that, that could be something on a horizon. Um, I know Mr. Leonard and I had a, a big long conversation, uh, at one of these meetings about if we don't designate land for specific purposes, residential will always win out. And so I'm going to take the wisdom that he imparted and use it here and say, this might be an opportunity to carve out a little bit of land that might be zoned specifically to encourage commercial so that it could get developed, uh, in light of the fact that without that designation, it will all be residential. I could see the same thing happening in the lower left in the Dickon neighborhood. There is like a Dickon park that is a patch of grass. There is nothing there but a patch of grass. But I know our parks cannot, uh, be designated like that. Those are charter changes. So we could, uh, tee up the fact that we may want to look at divesting of some of the unproductive park where we're never going to place anything on that park. But then we could create it or transition it into an opportunity zone where a developer or a group of developers could, um, work in conjunction with the city to bring something to a neighborhood to make it more complete. And then, uh, towards the upper left, as I indicated on Wednesday night, though I was wrong, um, there is some unzoned strips of land. It's more towards Barton Hills. Um, then to the immediate left, but there is a big patch of land that is unzoned because it was designated for, uh, M fourteen. And so again, putting an opportunity zone on that land that can then bring in mixed use, commercial, bakeries, um, dry cleaners, pet groomers, whatever those things are, but lowering the cost of the land acquisition so that we are incentivizing those, um, entrepreneurs or developers to come into that space, uh, to help us create a complete, uh, neighborhood. So those are my slight deviations from my other commissioners. Anyone else before I give it back to Jamie? It's all yours, Jamie.
Alright, thanks. So last one. Um, so these are really places that are doing well. Um, you know, it's places like Burn Park, Burns Park or the Old West Side. Um, you know, they, they register as being, you know, complete neighborhoods, um, have access to a lot of amenities. I guess the question is really, should these, you know, these places are doing well? Should they stay as they are? Um, or conversely, since these places have a lot of access to amenities, should we try to broaden that access by potentially changing the land use in some of these areas? Um, so it's kind of the, the inverse of the last question that we, we had.
Can I ask a clarifying question there? So you mean outside of the upzoning that is already, um, citywide? So you're saying more density than the R, I mean, the, the low-rise, if it goes up I mean, the the low-rise, if it goes up to forty-eight, so you're saying like mixed-use?
Yeah, should there be any places, and you know, a lot of this could be potentially be covered on the the corridors that we, we talked about. But are there, should should there be any other changes outside of the low-rise residential? Or on the commercial corridors that should happen in these areas, or, you know, they're they're doing well, they're pretty established neighborhoods and and. You know, providing a lot of amenities and they should just kind of be as they are.
Commissioner Wetherby.
Uh, so one of the things in this, this is not exactly an answer to your question, but uh that I have noticed on these maps, and this is a good. I think a good time to point it out, is that we're we're using. Existing historical zoning that may or may not have made a lot of sense, that may not make sense now. And so I see, you know, like some of these are mis-mixed-use transition, some are mixed-use hub, some are low-rise residential, but just can. You know, next to each other, like, are you, are we looking at kind of making these more general swaths of? Areas because I can, I can like sort of picking and choosing certain, you know, one. One-size lots to make like a mixed-use transition along these routes. But then there's, then there's a a low-rise residential and then the next street has a mixed-use transition. Is there a, when we talk about making changes to these areas, what? Are are we gonna smooth out some of those historic zoning? Questions so that there aren't like blocks of mix, you know, blocks of low-rise residential?
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, I guess this is, this is a good question outside of where we, we drew these circles, which is like generally citywide, um you know, if. Thinking about the the far northeast, you know, like, if we are thinking about. The orange is being like a transition, if, if we weren't considering the existing context, we probably wouldn't call. You know, this area, like this is not really a transition, right? Like it would probably be around the the dense areas, I I guess the under, you know. The idea of wanting to add more density, we don't necessarily wanna like, provide less density than is currently there, um. But I I think it's a good question about like, how should we, how closely should be intertwined with. The existing zoning and the translation, or should we think about it more broadly? Um, I I think that's a good question, and I, I don't necessarily have the answer for that right now, or if you have opinions on that.
I I think it's more of a a question, I noticed it particularly on South Main, because that's where I was looking, is that there's some. Big chunks kind of just taken out randomly that don't conform to anything that's on the, in the built infrastructure. That are low-rise residential, and then I'm seeing these kind of spots all around that it just doesn't make sense to me to keep. That historic designation with our new, a new look at.
Yeah, we, I mean, this map will definitely needs, again, this is like the direct translation from existing, but. You you know, it's a very good point in that we need to like, fine-tune this this map and and find those those areas that don't necessarily make sense, um.
And so it just kind of ties into this question of like, well, I don't. Sort of what's shown on the map doesn't necessarily make. Sense as a place that show potential for complete ne- neighborhoods but don't add much density, because it's, it's kind of a random chunk.
Anyone else? I'll give you some cover, um so the only thing I would add here, Jamie, is maybe as those uh circled. Um identified areas approach transit or higher. Um transit areas, we might look at um steps. So like, if at the core, I'm just looking at Burns Park, because it's at the center of my screen, I'm not necessarily picking on Burns Park. But at the core of it, you have the low-rise residential, but then on the boundaries. Um, there's a little bit of mixed-use transition to the west, uh but could there be some to the east? And could there be some to the south, and you know, just as a way of making some of that um more dense? The same could happen um in the circle that you have um and are calling the Old West Side. Um, because there's a lot of historic districts in there, and I know that so far, we haven't talked about our historic districts and. Whether or not we need to have all of the historic districts that we do, um and so. There there could be opportunities for us to adjust uh into those spaces, um. And whether or not we would wanna um. Consider disbanding some of those historic districts to allow the city to realize some of our um density goals, so. Those would just be a a couple of observations, uh because I feel like there are some things that just constrain us in unhelpful ways, but. I don't know if we're gonna talk about historic districts at any point in the comp plan, so, and that, we don't have time to address it now, but. I don't need to get on that. But um certainly, those are the kinds of things that come to mind because the. Liberty West and Burns Park, those are the places where you don't have a lot of districts that are overlapping, they're like these very pure ones. Um, in the low-rise, but they are complete neighborhoods, and so how how would we allow for more people to have access to those amenities? And I think that's something that we did discuss um at the steering committee around equity, is that um. If we're putting all of the density on transit corridors, then we are, again, embedding inequity into the zoning. Um, because people won't have the same opportunities for amenities. Uh, so where I am down in the Seventh and Silo Church area, we have a ninety-eight acre park that's across the street. Um, and so people can um cross, once you ski, they, there's a ice skating rink. Uh that folks flood and and make and maintain in that area, uh there's wild turkeys and. Deer and other fauna and flora that flow, and so it it makes for a very nice neighborhood and. Um, but how do we allow other people to have access to that amenity without having to get into a car? To get to that peace or to get to that quiet or to get to that place space, and I think we do that by making. Density available, because now more people can have a benefit to that without denigrating or um. Uh demeaning the experience of the people who may um already be there or be transitioning in or out, so. Anyone else? I'm gonna call your names, Commissioner Dish, oh, Mister Leonard, okay, I'm Hammer Schmidt, Commissioner Hammer Schmidt, alright. Mister Leonard, you get the final word and then I'll adjourn us.
Uh, thank you, uh just, uh we still have um quite a number of um attendees. So I just wanted to take this opportunity to remind anyone who is interested, you can um check out our project website where we. This presentation and other past presentations will are available. Um, all comment can be sent to planning@atogov.org and all of that is being compiled into all of the engagement. The all the feedback and ideas that we receive for the plan, um so I just wanted to add those quick plugs. And with that, take us home, Commissioner Witch.
Yeah, and I'll I'll just echo the the last gov delivery email, so if you're not subscribed to the planning department. Via the city's uh gov delivery service, I would recommend that you do that, um and I I just wanted to. Um, thank staff because I saw that there was a significant change in that email with a lot more detail, how to navigate. Legislature, how to speak at the meeting, how to get on to the agenda, all those things, so. Uh, the city is taking great efforts to ensure that we are able to hear from all voices across the city. And so with that, I am adjourning our meeting at nine oh four, good night, everyone.